Welcome everyone to our second in a month of September for the fourth Tuesday for our village board meeting. I'd like to get started and call the meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with the board commission, we're gonna have a little switch here in the front end. Our Treasurer Karen McLaughlin has a budget amendment that is timely that we would like to get in, so if you oblige, I'd like Karen to lead off for that. Any objections? Or yours Karen?
Okay, so I'm closing out 2324 and I just have three adjusting journal entries. One in the sewer fund for $7,848 for a prior year revenue, one in the water fund for $779.64 for prior year expense, and in the general fund, $23,021.26 for a prior year revenue. If you want to stop in and go through all the details of it, I can do that, but basically, these are adjusting journal entries to tie out 2324.
Is someone in? I can make a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much Karen.
Oh wait a second.
Treasurer's conference?
Happy birthday.
Snuck it in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lydia.
Great, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolution. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ryanbeck desires to update its long-range plans for the future of the village to protect, sustain, and enhance the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents, businesses, and the general public, and to give due consideration to the needs of the people of the region of which the village is abhearted. Whereas, the Legislature of the State of New York has found that among the most important powers and duties granted by the legislature to a village government is the authority and responsibility to undertake village comprehensive planning and to regulate land use for the purpose of protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens. And through this statute, has authorized villages to adopt comprehensive plans and amendments thereto. Whereas, the last time the village adopted a comprehensive plan was in 1993, and the Board of Trustees determined that the preparation of a new comprehensive plan was warranted. Whereas, by Resolution 1026202-1 dated October 26, 2021, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ryanbeck established the Village of Ryanbeck Comprehensive Plan Committee. Whereas, on January 11, 2022, the Board of Trustees adopted a committee to undertake various studies and analyze conditions and needs of the village and its residents, and after extensive deliberations, the committee incorporated the information and insights from these activities into the proposed comprehensive plan. Whereas, on July 2, 2024, after two and a half years of work and legally required public hearing, the committee unanimously passed a resolution to refer the July 9, 2024 draft comprehensive plan to the board with a positive recommendation for adoption pursuant to New York State Village Law. Whereas, during a meeting of the board held on July 9, 2024, the board introduced the proposed plan, classified the proposed action as a Type 1 action pursuant to Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law (SECRE) and its implementing regulations found in Part 617 of the New York State Code of Rules and Regulations, determined that there were no other involved or agency, involved or interested agencies, declared itself to be the lead agency for the purposes of environmental review, and referred the proposed plan to both the Planning Board and the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for their formal review and comment. Whereas, on August 9, 2024, the board received the following comment from Dutchess County Planning: "We commend the village and its comprehensive plan committee on the draft comprehensive plan and the process that got the plan to this point. Over the last few years, the committee engaged in what may be the most extensive municipal comprehensive planning process the county has ever seen, particularly from a public engagement perspective. We were grateful to be among the many departments, institutions, and community groups invited to participate in that process. The end result is a document that recognizes and reinforces what makes the village such a special place while offering implementable impactful solutions to the challenges the community faces. We look forward to assisting the village with implementation of the plan if requested." Recommendation: The department recommends that the board rely upon its own study of the facts in the case with due consideration of the above comments. Whereas, on August 13, 2024 pursuant to village law, the board opened a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed plan, which public hearing was continued on September 3, 2024 and September 12, 2024, at which time all interested persons were given the opportunity to speak, and the board closed the public hearing on September 12, 2024. Whereas, the board also accepted written correspondence relating to or commenting on the plan from August 13, 2024 through September 12, 2024. Whereas, the plan was available at the office of the village clerk for public review during the public hearing period. Whereas, the board received no comment from the village planning board. And whereas, the board duly considered the comments received from the public during the public comment period and incorporated revisions where appropriate. Whereas, on September 15, 2024, the village clerk referred the revised comprehensive plan to Dutchess County Planning for review and comment, and on September 18, 2024, Dutchess County Planning replied that the revised plan was a matter of local concern. Whereas, the board has prepared drafts Parts 2 and 3 of the EAF to further assist in reviewing the potential adverse impact of the revised plan. And whereas, the board has carefully reviewed the potential adverse environmental impact of the plan, taken a hard look, and evaluated such potential against the criteria for significance in SECRE. Now, therefore let it be resolved, the board would like to thank every member of our community who has participated in the creation of this vital land use document since October 2021. Be it further resolved, the board adopts Part 2 and 3 of the EAF and concludes that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and therefore adopts the negative declaration attached heretofore as Exhibit B, and determines not to require an environmental impact statement pursuant to SECRE. Be it further resolved, the board, having reviewed and considered the comments of the public and Dutchess County Planning as well as the final version of the proposed plan, fully supports and concurs with the vision, goals, policies, and strategies set forth therein, and finds it in the best interest of the board to adopt said plan. Be it further resolved, the board adopts the 2024 Village of Ryanbeck Comprehensive Plan envisioning the future for our historic community attached heretofore as Exhibit A as the village's new comprehensive plan under village law 7-722. And be it further resolved, the village clerk is directed to file a copy of Exhibit A, the 2024 Village of Ryanbeck Comprehensive Plan, in their office to send a copy to Dutchess County Planning and to publish a notice of the negative declaration in the environmental notice bulletin pursuant to SECRE.
Any discussion?
Amazing work.
Yeah, first I'd like to give congratulations to Trustee Slavy, the architect of really this plan, and the foresight to think about how to pull this together, and to Matt Johnson sitting here, he serves as chair for the committee even though he relocated and continued his tasks during his relocation. Thank you Matt for everything you've done, and all of you in the community and those on the Comprehensive Plan Committee that participated, job well done. Thank you. With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So cool.
Alright, hi there. Thank you, thank you, thank you everyone.
I have a little comment. There is a small typo.
We're not gonna take public comments. If it's a typo, you can just send it to us and we'll take care of it.
I caught it as I was reading it.
Yeah, 2024, September 23. We got it.
We got it.
Is there any time for public comment or no?
No, not today.
No public comment.
No public comment today. Thank you Rachel.
You're so welcome Gary.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Task Order Number 44, which is for Seymour Chestnut Street Drainage. I invited Brandy Nelson, Vice President of Time Bond, to kind of give us an overview and discussion of that. Please.
So, hi everyone, for the record, I'm Brandy Nelson with Time Bond, I'm the village engineer. First of all, congratulations, Trustee Slavy, well done, well done everybody for all the participation. I've been doing this kind of work for 25 years, I've never seen the tremendous public engagement that has gone on, and when I've talked to colleagues, they're hearing about what Ryanbeck has done and all the good work, so you're certainly setting precedent for the area. Congratulations. On more mundane tasks, we have sent over at the request of the village, a task order for a drainage analysis. Some of you are probably aware, on East Chestnut Street, there is a small stream or swell to be determined exactly what it is, but from time to time, that swell which is networked into the village's piped stormwater system will surcharge and results in some flooding in that area. So, over the years I've looked at it just briefly, and the DPDW has done some cleaning, and we are still continuing to see flooding through that area. So, what we're proposing is actually to do a detailed study and come up with a proposed plan for remediation in that area. Trancy Lilitt and the mayor and myself have been out there and walked through that area. Also, the mayor's done some background research, and the planning board had some foresight 50 years ago and asked for a drainage easement through a particular portion of that area. So, what we'd like to do is undertake a detailed survey so that we can size new drainage infrastructure through that location, and make sure that we are doing that work within the confines of the village's authority and easements that exist already, which requires that we do both a survey and an engineering analysis. So, what we've got outlined in this task order are a couple of tasks, the first being mapping and easement evaluation, so just understanding where the village has infrastructure and the rights to maintain that infrastructure, and then having a licensed land surveyor conduct a survey through there, which is both a linear survey and cross-sections so that we can then move forward with creating some mapping and doing the modeling. Typically, when we undertake these, we are seeing snapshots in the performance of that drainage network, so we like to do with your assistance a community engagement for the folks in the neighborhood that are affected, so that we can make sure that if we're considering a design, we're considering all the inputs from all the various neighbors. And then we do two things that we normally talk about together, but I've got them broken out as separate items here, are hydrologic analysis and a hydraulic analysis. Hydrologic just means how the rain falls on the land and then how the water is carried away, and hydraulic is then how it flows through pipes and channels, so it's two different components there. Following that modeling, we would do a schematic plan to design improvements through that drainage way, prepare a cost estimate, and then summarize everything into a technical memo and meet with you all to discuss next steps in terms of capital planning. And of course, we consider whether there are grant funding opportunities that we can seek also. That is everything.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal Number 44 for Seymour Chestnut Street Drainage.
Second.
Discussion.
Somebody sent me a letter and asked me to read it, but I was going to read it in public comment, but now we don't have public comments, so.
Well, you're under the board, you don't have to wait for public comment.
What's the summary of them?
Should I read the letter?
Okay, we're in discussion.
Yeah, I was asked to read it, so I might as well. After Irene, I believe, several, I believe that was the time, this is the person speaking, "Several basements in the area were flooded due to inadequate runoff. This is Chestnut. The choke point was where the stormwater crossed under Chestnut, just west of Crossmore. The problem is that two larger storm drain pipes, I would say 15 to 18 inches, go under Chestnut and feed into two smaller storm drain pipes, I would say 12 inches, that run both toward and perpendicular to Star. There's also a storm lid in the middle of the bonds that lets ground debris into the storm pipes, and this was clogged with debris after Irene. I walked this area with Brandy Nelson, and she said that we would not need an engineer to remedy the problem. I brought in Paul Matthews, excavator and engineer to look over the site, and Paul suggested we merely increase the pipe size to something much larger. I believe it was replacing the two 12-inch pipes to one 24 to 30-inch pipe. Again, to cover the gap from Chestnut to Star without disturbing the much larger pipe under each of these roads, we discussed that the easiest approach would be to open up a ditch and allow the water to flow freely. However, neighbors would lose some of their lawns due to the open ditch, so we thought burying the larger pipe would be the best choice. I recall at the time, the entire bid to remediate was less than $30,000 with no engineering expenses. I don't recall why the board did not choose to do this at the time, but the same thing could be accomplished now. There are way too many fuzzy variables when considering drainage areas, soil absorption slope, et cetera, but if you bury a large drainage pipe and rely on the expertise of an experienced installer, you will be good." It was signed by Grant Huneck or...
Brandy is an engineer, you want to comment?
Sure, so it's been a very long time since Irene. I may have walked that, because I have looked at this problem over the years for the village. I think what we have discovered since that time is that there are additional drainage inputs that come in from Seymour Street and also from Crossmore.
And Star.
And Star, yes, and Star. So, it's a larger problem than we originally identified, and although I do respect the fact that having a qualified installer is helpful, one thing that we have observed through that area is it's very, very flat, and so when you are flowing water across a flat site, having a detailed survey and doing the engineering assessment of how water will flow through that area is really critical, so that you don't expend a lot of effort and funds and then end up with something that continues to have a flooding problem.
You know, I would just like to say that this is how we got to where we are. The original pipes that were put in, that were just described, were done without any engineering evaluation. No fault to those people who did it back then, because I'm sure they used the best information they had at the time. Given the environment and the impacts of climate change and everything that's happening that we've observed over the past few years with that area and the flooding, I think it requires an extensive analysis so that we are prepared for the future and for the impacts of climate that are impacting a lot of our infrastructure here within the village. And I'd also like to remind the board that this was one of the major areas that we proposed when we put the budget together, that we would do some analysis to understand our storm drainage systems, and that we also had the foresight to set aside $40,000 for this project when we did the budget exercise.
That was gonna be my next question, I don't remember what the budget was.
Yeah, and this is $40,100, but we did set aside $40,000 for this exercise in our budget line-up process.
I would also point out, in terms of just simply putting in a bigger pipe, we have a problem of runoff from Star down towards that area. Putting a bigger pipe in there would do nothing to address those problems, so we have a much larger drainage area problem that we have to look at. It's not as simple as just putting in a big pipe. There's actually a network in places where it floods upstream, independent of what's going on down in that area, and so we need to look at the whole enchilada.
Because my only concern, I mean, I'm glad it was put in the budget, but my only concern is that we've had these huge bunches of engineering, we've got 10 to 40 to 40 or whatever we're spending, so.
It takes a budget, it takes engineering to do it right, and that's, you know, the basis of what we want to do is to do it right the first time, and rather than ad-hoc-ing it, which may or may not work in the future, you put down good money so you can engineer and make sure that it's done right. Hopefully, in 50 or 100 years, maybe they'll come back and need to do it again, but.
I would probably point out that we can probably get, or at least set ourselves up better for success in getting grants if we've done the homework of doing a study. I don't, Brandy corrected if I'm wrong, but going out for grants for this kind of infrastructure probably requires engineering.
That is true. We recently were looking at the Green Resiliency Grant Program, which just had a funding round close in August, and you can't even apply for that unless you've done your preliminary design and have a good cost estimate, and are able to demonstrate how the drainage improvements will manage through severe storms that we're seeing. So, that's a good point.
And so you're going to be designing recommendations looking at the 25-year flood, 25-year storm?
25 is what we typically do, and that is, is the industry standard storm sizes have gotten, so 25, 25 years ago was actually a smaller storm than 25 is now. We were talking internally whether or not it made sense to look, you want to be careful not to over-design in this instance, and be not cost-effective, but maybe something we want to look at graduation, like here's how much bigger the pipe would be, it's easy enough for us to run the model for an increased storm size, so you can do that.
I think this gets back to what was brought up at a couple meetings about having some sort of overall picture of where we're heading so that we have a better sense of what we're committing ourselves to, because, you know, I just look at large chunks of money going out, you know, how does this impact us in a couple years down the road and so on.
And that's part of the budget process, which you participated in and sat through all our meetings, so when we do that budget process, we're thinking about that bigger picture and where we have to go, and these are the things that we outlined to do as part of our budget.
But I didn't have the numbers in front of me, so I just could hear what was, you know, going back and forth and make guesses as to what was happening, but I actually have the numbers to look at.
The only other thing I would add is that the drainage network in this location is at the top of your drainage system here in the village, and so, and we're doing a whole chunk out, you know, we'll do a whole analysis out to the Landsman Hill, and so I think it's a place where historically the village has had issues for, you know, a decade that I can remember personally, but I think, you know, much longer, so much so that 50 years ago when they did the subdivision in that area, they had the foresight to put drainage easement in, so someone knew that there was, you know, a water management issue that needed to be considered at that point in time. So, you know, this is taking care of one whole segment of the drainage network in the village, doesn't feed into a subdivision.
It doesn't feed into a subdivision?
No. It feeds into the Landsman Hill.
Isolated enough, okay.
No, you say it doesn't, does feed into the Landsman Hill.
No, it doesn't feed into.
But it doesn't network into another part of their pipe drainage.
You know, I mean, it's interesting, like, the numbers associated with all of this stuff are just eye-popping, and I fully appreciate why and how it takes, you know, smart people doing smart things in order to make sure that we're doing this kind of work well and designed for the long term, especially in the face of increased flooding from climate change. But I have a great deal of sympathy for the eye-popping numbers. I'm grateful that we budgeted for this last year, we thought about it. I do think that, you know, having a conversation about sort of five-year capital planning and these are the projects that we're doing, you know, this has sort of come up a few times, I do think that that would be a very good idea, and to, you know, put it in a way that's digestible for us and digestible potentially for the public, because it is, this is a lot of money. You know, this community doesn't seem to have a problem spending $500,000 a year on its fire department, $500,000 a year on its police department, but, you know, we need to get the community comfortable with the idea that we have to spend real dollars in order to fix real capital issues. And that's part of our homework as, you know, the chief communicators of this government. So, you know, I agree that we need to have something readable and digestible, but I also agree that this is something that's important that we need to do and that we budgeted for, so.
Yeah, you know, the biggest chunk of this is the survey cost, and Brandy and I went back and forth on this, and the difficult part is finding a surveyor that can do the work.
Has anyone who has transferred any property in the last 10 years would know?
And, you know, I'm gonna publicly state that the surveyor that typically is used, Crawford Associates, is now at the conflict of interest because the property owners engage them into the process. So, we end up having to find two other surveys, get out other quotes, and this was the best quote that they could find for that work. So, yeah, we're kind of a victim of circumstances as well, because the community who lives there recognizes this as a problem and tried to take some action as well.
Got it.
Well, I mean, I agree, I mean, I know it's been a problem for residents, because I knocked down those doors, and it's been a problem, just struggling with the price here, but, you know, there might be a way to do this, maybe join the gold version, maybe the silver or the bronze version.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. 10 weeks.
Yes, yes.
Thank you Brandy.
Yep.
We're off. Our Officer Dunn, who is sitting here in the audience with us, is due for a contract update. Actually, it was due the end of May, but there's been a series of discussions going on in terms of trying to evaluate the position, trying to work with civil service, and et cetera, that costs us some additional time to work through this contract. So, what I have now, what I propose to the board, is a contract which you've all had the ability to read, which is a three-year contract, taking Sergeant Dunn out for the next three years, with a proposed salary increase of $45 an hour and a 3% increase after that. It'll be, the effective date, a change in this, because the effective date is on the agreement of this document, not on June 1st, as I said in the email to all of you, it's not retroactive, so it's effective as of now, or when we vote, when we choose to vote on it. Most of the other things within there are pretty much the same. We changed the wording, simplified the contract from before to make it fit more civil service requirements, made it fit into what we're trying to accomplish within our, with our police department. We also made the options to Sergeant Dunn, who, contract was completed before the last police union contract where we include a sick time, we extended to Sergeant Dunn the same equivalent, which is a sick time, and vacation time, which were done before. So, other than that, there's no other dramatic changes to the proposal. I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for Officer Dunn, effective September 24, 2024.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just a question about the vacation time that didn't need to be put in there, that it's paid, or is it paid?
It's assumed it's paid, and for legal, just like all of our other contracts, vacation is paid, right? So, there's no need to clearly identify that vacation is paid, because that's why you get vacation.
The officer's an incredible resource for the village.
I think he's done an outstanding job myself. I would rather, I would not, I would not want to have anybody else in that position currently at this time, given his experience and involvement with the Village of Ryanbeck, our events, our planning, our running of the office, everything else. It's a tough job, and it's not an easy job at times. And sometimes you have a plan, and sometimes you get a phone call, and the emergency happens, and those plans change, this just happened just recently, and disrupt your whole plan for the day. And I understand that can be frustrating, but that's the job you choose, and that's the job we're thankful that you do.
Thanks Pete.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Well done, thank you, and congratulations, and looking forward to continuing to working with you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Vanessa, we'll talk about composting.
Yes, so.
Excuse me, does anybody know that we started talking about composting seven years ago?
Wow.
Seven years ago, we started talking about how to do compost here in the village.
Mine really does fly when you're having fun. So, as you all know, we, you know, we finally received approval, final stamp of approval from the state to start spending our grant money and get this project going. We've been meeting with the firm, actually Michael DeCola of the first table that we're gonna be partnering with, we and I went to a full-day composting conference hosted by the DEC, including a visit to a local composting site. It was very informative. But what I'm sharing with the board today is a village compost participant registration form. is a village compost participant registration form. And so this form would be hosted by the village, and this is what we would be advertising to village residents to fill out if they want to participate. We want to have a registration form because we want to be able to track how many people are participating, as well as having away a method, a list of people that we can get in touch with if we have announcements or changes. So, and thank you all for your feedback. I did incorporate it with a lot more information about the program at the top of the form. You know, as with any form, you try to keep it straightforward, you try to keep it concise. I did include a few questions about their background, their familiarity with compost, just for our own tracking purposes. But mostly, this is just to collect their information and to make sure that they're aware of the rules and regulations and how the project will work. So I'd like to make a motion that the board approve this compost participant registration.
Second.
Any discussion?
You did a great job.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What happens to the program? I just saw one of our credit card bills, I don't think I saw. A charge from the ozone for the old program. So what's going to happen to the old program?
Right, so I should say that the businesses here in the village, such as restaurants, cafes, Sunflower Market, they will continue to have their own contracts with the ozone, should they choose to continue, because they get curbside pickup. The program that we're designing is a centralized drop-off. So after the pilot ended, there were families that wanted to continue, even though the village couldn't continue to subsidize because we spent that budget. So there were groups of neighbors who kind of self-organized and shared amongst themselves and hired the ozone to pick up that service. I will reach out to those families and say, it's no longer necessary if you're willing to schlep your food scraps over to the central drop-off spot.
So we need to call those in.
So I think the question is that we're still being built by ozone.
Right, so the way up to.
At such a time as the program launches, you can cancel that.
Okay, but it'd be up to us to do it.
Yeah, I'll talk to OZO as well, yeah.
I see, no, swapped over or something?
No, we'll have to cancel that.
It's two separate.
Yeah.
So a little bird in my ear is wondering how we're tracking the form. So it's a Microsoft form.
Yes.
And so, do you, just for records management purposes, will you make sure to share all of that with Martina?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And it will, it will output a comprehensive Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll add it like any other form that the village uses. But I'll have the, like, copies of it to me too. For anybody who does register.
You mean paper copy?
I mean, or I could put it on a file that I have. I'll need a copy in my office.
Okay, of like the final Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, let's follow up. We'll figure out the details, but yeah, for records keeping, absolutely.
Because it'll have everybody's name on the responses.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Wait, do we have to vote?
Do we vote? I thought we did a lot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay, Vanessa.
Yay.
My God.
Okay.
I did all those sorts of stuff today.
Speaking of police, are, from time to time, we are required to use the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office for certain activities within the village, either, you know, directed or sometimes brought in. As everybody has known, cost of services are increasing dramatically. And the County Sheriff's Office has given us a new pay scale for their department, where the deputy sheriff, you know, the hourly rate is $30 an hour and so forth, all down to an average rate of $49.40, plus administration fees, plus mileage. I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2025 administrative fee schedule for Dutchess County Sheriff's Office.
Second, I have a question.
Sure.
This isn't for when, like, they just happen to respond to a 911 call. This is when we, like, specifically call them in for help or something?
This is when we use them.
Okay, okay.
Right, no, they can't.
Yeah.
The way I understand it.
They can't charge us for 911.
Pete, correct me. They have, like, eight districts, which they have a car in 24/7. And so they're constantly responding to calls.
Right.
They could even respond to a village call if they.
This is for Boswell Beyond, this is for all the events that we.
Like when the big thing showed up behind village hall for Senator Claus?
Yeah, Senator Claus, marathons, that kind of stuff.
Okay, got it.
For those events.
But for calls.
Yeah. Okay, just checking.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seems like everything's going up a lot more than 2%.
We would have thought. Okay, Panda. We all know there's five municipalities that are, serve on the Panda Board. Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Red Hook, typically, right? Who all serve on the Panda Board. Panda Board, where we, as the village of Rhinebeck, have not had a representative on that board for quite some time. The past person, due to conflicts and everything else, was unable to continue, but was really serving a multitask role to be able to do that. And whereas we, who we budget $17,000 a year to cover the cost of Panda, to get this valuable service, to be able to put this broadcast out to all of you, would like to have a say in that budget and that process and how things are going forward technically. So whereas the Panda Board of Directors is composed of an appointed member by each municipality, and whereas Panda needs to recruit new board members, and whereas the member appointed by the village of Rhinebeck, Dana Weedman, had resigned due to other commitments, and whereas this position has no term limits, and a member can serve until they resign or to the village chooses to appoint someone else, therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Becky Tyre, sitting in the audience here, as the village of Rhinebeck representative on the Panda Board of Directors, effective September 24, 2024.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to point out, it's missing from the resolution that this is a 100% volunteer board, there's no compensation.
Good one, yeah. And you're in for life. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky, for raising your hand.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
God bless. Okay, then applications. Did I get to it?
Light the Village Pink?
Yep. This is a ven application. From Lord Dutchess Hospital Foundation, who would like to have family and a family-friendly public event celebrating the beginning of October, Light the Village Pink campaign in Rhinebeck and Red Hook. Dave Hughes, who will park his truck in the parking lot, and we will have, they will have several booths and health information, family activities, such as face painting, snacks, music, and a short program. The date of the event is October 1st. Its set-up time is at 9:00 AM. Event start time then is 5:30 PM. And we'll ask to set, last at 7:30 PM. It will be held in a Foster's Coast House, Foster's Coach House parking lot, whereas it has been held for many years. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Lord Dutchess Hospital to Light the Village Pink for breast cancer awareness.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Do they need anything for us? Do they need anything for us or that, or?
No, there's no, no parking, no. They're not going to, they're going to be contained totally within the parking lot.
Okay.
Martina, okay?
I don't know, but I'll keep taking notes.
Next, Pedder's permanent application. This is Troop 228, another application that we receive yearly from the Boy Scouts. This is, as I said, Troop 228 Boy Scouts, submitted by Joe Phelan, Troop Committee Chair. And this is for 228, seeking approval to sell locally sourced pumpkins as a fundraiser to support outdoor youth activities. No vehicle will be used with pumpkins. Pumpkins will be sold at the sidewalk, at the edge of the Rhinebeck parking lot on East Market Street in the village of Rhinebeck. The dates are, where do I find the dates here?
Five and six. October 5th and 6th.
October 5th and 6th. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Boy Scout Troop 228 to raise funds for the activities through the sale of locally sourced pumpkins.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last on the agenda, do we have? No, Karen, conference attendance here. So this is submitted by our treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, to send to, again, to.
Thanks, Pete.
To attend the New York Government Financial Conference on 33125 to 4425. It'll be held in Albany Marriott. Seminar commentary is $250. Per course fee is $100. So that's two nights stay for $147 each.